All right, everybody's ready. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, good work there. Lord, we're just, we're ever so thankful that as citizens, we've been entrusted to look over our community and do those things which would benefit the people of the town and help make our community a desirable place to live. We just ask for your wisdom in the decisions we make. Greatness, that your blessing be upon this city for all its issues and Jesus. All right, I guess we'll have a great chance to look at the agenda. Is there any changes?
Yes, sir.
Take the motion to approve the agenda.
Make a motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
Motion of second and discussion. Hold, favor, aye.
Aye.
Okay, we'll open up citizens' comments. If there's anybody who'd like to address the council.
Somebody. I just wanted to invite you guys all. We're going to have a ribbon cutting for the mobile library on October seventeenth at six thirty. So it's actually a thirty minutes before the city council meeting that night. So it'll be over at the library. It's wrapped and just got a couple of things they're working on and then we'll be ready to go.
Anyone else who should address the council? That will close citizens' comments. And by me, I don't think we have any proclamations or appointments.
Yes, sir.
So we'll move on to consent agenda. Has anyone had a chance to look at the consent agenda?
I make a motion that we approve the consent agenda.
Motion. Sir, second?
Second.
Motion of second. Hold, favor, aye.
Aye.
Code? Curious. Let's move on between the item G, I guess. Equity fee ordinance.
That would be it. Honorable mayor and city council, this is item G one, equity fee ordinance adoption. So, quick background, as the city of Goddard grows, the demand that's put on its water and sewer infrastructure increases. This demand results in new costs associated with maintenance, construction, and management of the city sewer and water system. On October fourth, two thousand and twenty-one, the city council reviewed a draft designed to offset the long-term costs of city infrastructure for both water and sewer. This proposal was later reviewed on March seventh, two thousand and twenty-two, with city council asking for a comparative city analysis of other cities. The findings from the review are being presented today along with a refined draft ordinance. So city staff reviewed several municipalities for comparison of water and sewer connection fees and ancillary costs of cities used to offset long-term maintenance and management of city water and sewer costs. The cities that we reviewed were Bel Air, Derby, Mays, Valley Center, Wichita. The source links are in the agenda. So we'll start with Bel Air. So Bel Air has a sewer and water connection like most cities. They have a water equity fee and a sewer equity fee. They don't have a plant equity fee. And these equity fees that you're going to see, they tend to jump around. So city will have a plant equity fee or sewer equity fee. The terminology changes, but they're generally the same. What we did here is we set a permit fee at a thousand dollars for both, and so that way it stays uniform for the comparison. The water equity fee and the sewer equity fee for the Bel Air, for residential, it's locked into the sewer connection fee at nine fifty and twenty-six fifty. For commercial, it jumps into a service line. So the water and sewer, with a sewer impact in the water, are based on line size. So that's what Bel Air is utilizing. And so if you used a two-inch line size for a commercial, you would get thirty-six hundred and thirty-six hundred for water and sewer. And so total cost for a one-thousand permit, for a one-thousand dollar value permit with the water equity and sewer equity would be ninety-two, I'm sorry, eighty-two hundred. And then for residential, it would be forty-six hundred. So you'll see these two costs come up again in the comparison with the rest of the cities, but we're going to jump into some other cities as well. So this is Derby. So Derby bases on zoning. So once again, thousand dollar permit, a thousand dollar permit. We're assuming a two-inch line for commercial to keep it uniform. Derby's is a little bit more unique. They don't have a water equity, sewer equity, or plant equity. They do have a tap fee at five hundred and five hundred, and then the sewer and water connection, a thousand per unit and twenty-five hundred, twenty-five hundred, and thirty-seven hundred for sewer and commercial. But Derby is a little bit more unique because Derby charges about a thousand dollars per unit. So this residential, even though it's forty-two hundred right here, that's for a single-family detached. So if you actually had a duplex, this would be fifty-two hundred. And a triplex would be sixty-two hundred. A quadplex would be seventy-two hundred. So it's really interesting that Derby decided to offset their long-term costs based on the number of units that is being introduced to the service, which is actually a neat way of going about it. So this is Goddard. Our permit, once again, thousand and a thousand. We base it on land use. The sewer connection here is pretty stable. We have fifteen hundred and fifteen hundred regardless. It includes the connection fee. And then for commercial, it's twenty-five hundred regardless of line size, et cetera, and includes a connection fee. So for us, a residential, typical residential unit would be four thousand. A commercial, two-inch line, would be around six thousand, or two-inch, four-inch, et cetera. And so this stays relatively the same regardless of how big the line size is or anything of that nature. And a duplex would be four thousand regardless as well. A triplex would be the same. Now, obviously, if they're introducing more lines and more taps, we would start charging the tap fee again. But a triplex would just be, if they can have a two-inch line or a three-quarter inch line to service three units, it's just going to be the four thousand. So this is Mays. So Mays, once again, thousand dollar permit, thousand dollar permit. Sewer connection is a thousand, sewer connection a thousand for this for commercial. Water connection is a little bit more unique. They have a complicated kind of system in here. The commercial's the same as the residential. It's based generally on service line connection. They do have a plant equity fee for water and sewer, eleven hundred here and eleven hundred here. And then twenty-six hundred, twenty-six hundred based on two-inch line. And then as the line size gets bigger, that fee for commercial gets bigger. So if we kept it at a two-inch line, we're seeing seventy-two hundred for Mays, fifty-two hundred for residential in Mays. Excuse me. Valley Center, it gets a little bit more complex. Permit, once again, a thousand. Two-inch line is a thousand. So we're keeping it the same once again for comparison. Sewer connection here is, like I said, a little bit more complex. They have a cost of labor, material meter, valves, fitting, and administrative fees. I set that generally at fifteen hundred because that's going to be really based on each individual development. You can't really say, you'd have to dive into every single building permit to determine how they came up with the fee for the sewer connection. And once again, you'd have to come up with that for the water connection as well. So we just set it as fifteen hundred. The commercial is the same as the residential, so I'm setting out fifteen hundred for both. They do have a plant equity fee and a plant equity fee for sewer and water. Now, they adopted that in two thousand and ten. It was officially adopted in January of two thousand and eleven. And they had it set in their code, per their municipal code, which all the references are down at the bottom and also as well in your agenda packet. It increases three percent annually as a default. So what we did here is we took what is adopted, the rate that is adopted at, and we projected it into the future from two thousand and eleven to current rate at three percent per year to kind of see what it would be reflected at here. So this should be, all things being considered, and if you're following the code, the language of the code, these would be the new fees that Valley Center has. And so if you take those new fees and you apply it to the plant equity for here for sewer and water, this is kind of what you would get. Fifty-nine hundred for residence and ninety-five hundred, ninety-three for a commercial with a two-inch line. So that's also kind of a unique thing about Valley Center is that they adopted it back in two thousand and eleven, and then they just said, this is going to increase at three percent, probably to match something close to inflation at the time. Which obviously is a lot more complex. There is some fees that I couldn't actually track down. But once again, I set it at one thousand, one thousand, a two-inch line on a commercial. The water connection fee was pretty static. It's when you get down to the plant equity fee, which they have for water and sewer, that it becomes a little bit more tabular over here where you'll see that's based on meter size for the sewer. And then over here, meter and service description, which also has a plant equity fee and a connection fee combined, which is included over here on this table, which populates over here, based on a two-inch line, which is what we're using to keep it uniform for the comparison. And so if you tabulate all this together, what you have is fifty-one hundred for residence and commercial two-inch line is around fourteen thousand. So this is what it looks like side by side. So what city staff is proposing is that the current code found in chapter fifteen, article one for water, chapter fifteen, article two for sewer, we would like to amend it to introduce this equity fee, which would be a sewer infrastructure equity fee and a water infrastructure equity fee. These parts, both together, suggest charging sewer infrastructure equity fee and water infrastructure equity fee to the sewer connection fee to assist with the cost of expanding and maintaining the sewer treatment plant and all other related expenses for sewer and water for the city of Goddard. And what we would do is we collect it upfront. So when somebody submits a building permit, there is a connection application that they submit with the building permit. And on that application, they're going to ask for a tap. And that tap will say, well, we want to introduce a three-quarter inch line or a two-inch line or a one-inch line. And based on that, we'll be charging them these fees that would be associated with it. So if it's a residence, we'll be charging five hundred dollars for a sewer infrastructure equity fee unless that service line is two inches or greater, and then it'll be charged at the commercial rate. For commercial, it'll be based on line size. Two inches or less will be at two thousand. And then, as reflected here, four-inch, six-inch, eight-inch, ten-inch will be, these costs will be associated. Now, these costs obviously seem dramatically high, eighty thousand for a ten-inch line. But obviously, as Harlan Foraker, the city engineer, and Brian Selkopf, the city administrator, and Brooke Vandenberg, public works director, can say, if somebody's asking for a ten-inch line, they're bringing a lot of demand. So a ten-inch line is pretty dramatic, and they'll probably be able to afford the eighty thousand dollar tap, and that won't even look the other way. So it will, that is just a pretty dramatic line increase for that. So a lot of these rates are reflective of something of what Wichita was doing. It's a little bit scaled back, but it's somewhat comparable. Once again, the water is going to be somewhat the same. Residentially, it'd be five hundred dollars unless the service line is two inches or greater, and then it'll be charged at the commercial rate. A commercial line is two-inch line, or with a two-inch meter or less would be two thousand dollars. And then reflective of sewer, it'd be just the same thing. If these fees are adopted, this is kind of something what it would look like. With a one thousand dollar building permit, keeping it the same, we would be at five thousand dollars on average for a building permit, including taps and equity fees. And then a two-inch commercial would be around ten thousand. So this would put us right about in the middle mark for May, between Mays, Valley Center, Wichita, and Bel Air and Derby. As you can see here, this is tracking a little bit behind Mays, Valley Center, and Wichita for residential. But we're trying to track a little bit on the front end for the commercial because we're expecting the residential to bring in more commercial. We're hoping to offset that cost so that the residents don't bear that as as stringently as perhaps the commercial side would. If the city council adopts the ordinance, there'll be a follow-up agenda item for amending the master fee schedule to include the fees on the previous slide. So if you feel that this is acceptable and you want to adopt the ordinance for this equity fee, there will be a follow-up agenda item today that'll have the master fee scheduled, and there'll be a resolution to amend that. So that'll be included in for comparison. Financially, there'll be a small publication cost for the ordinance, and legally, it's approved as the form. It is recommended the city council waive the reading of the ordinance in a voice. Number two, approve the ordinance and amend in chapter fifteen, article one, and chapter fifteen, article two of the City of Goddard code, a voice and a roll call. About that at this point. Any questions, thoughts?
And eighty thousand on a ten-inch line, is it for both sewer and the water? Or is that a combined?
So it'd be eighty thousand for water and eighty thousand for sewer, for a hundred and sixty thousand total for a ten-inch line. Which, as mentioned, somebody's asking for a ten-inch line, be pretty dramatic.
Going to be a great usage of both of them.
Yeah, yeah.
Our city supply line's sixteen inches for comparison.
So basically, it'd be like asking for another whole city consumer, thinking of it that way. But they'd be able to afford that cost pretty easily.
Okay, take a motion away, reading the ordinance.
I'll make that motion. Second.
Motion of second. Any discussion? Hold, favor, say aye.
Aye.
Code? Curious. Make a motion to approve the ordinance.
I'll make that motion, too.
Sir, second?
Second.
Sir, second. Any discussion? Roll call.
Councilmember Leland?
Yes.
Councilmember Zuma?
Yes.
Councilmember Trailer?
Yes.
Councilmember Fracture?
Yes.
The ordinance number nine oh one.
Thank you very much. This is item G point two, the benefit fee discussion. So, quick background, as mentioned, as the city grows, the demand that's put on its water and sewer infrastructure increases. This demand results in new costs associated with maintenance, construction, and management of city water and water system. Discussion around an oversight in the city infrastructure for future developments was discussed on October fourth, two thousand and twenty-one. The proposal was later reviewed on March seventh, two thousand and twenty-two. The government body asking for a comparison about the cities and metro areas was conducted, which is being presented today. Discussion with the city attorneys has determined that the best way to reference the benefit fee is through the subdivision regulations. Any changes to the subdivision regulations must be done by the planning commission first after a public notice has been published and a city newspaper allowing twenty days to lapse per City of Goddard Regulations, Article thirteen, and state law KSA twelve dash seven fifty-seven. The planning commission will be reviewing the changes on October tenth, two thousand and twenty-two, which is a week from today. Final review will be followed by a recommendation for adoption of an ordinance that will need to be published in city newspaper per KSA twelve dash three zero zero seven. So what we're looking at today is simply a review. So it'd be a receiving file. And any comments, questions, concerns, or anything else will be received and will amend it. The final ordinance will be presented at city council, maybe later in this month or in November, just depending on as needed. But planning commission, technically, if we're amending the subdivision regulations, they have to review it first. So the planning commission will review it first, and then they'll make recommendations for final adoption, which will be presented to city council on that later date with the revised ordinance if needed. But the ordinance as it is currently drafted is in your agenda packet for review if you have any questions about it. And as you can see before you on the slides, this is something you've seen before. Development one is proposing to be built. They want to have extensions. Development two is coming down the road. The city would consider oversizing that because development one has to pay a lot of this cost. And so if they're going to connect to here and development two is going to come down the road, oversizing the sewer and water or any other infrastructure as needed, the city could bear that cost at large, at which point we would assess it at a later date to that future development for tapping into that infrastructure if we decide to oversize it. For most developments, we're simply telling developers that we want them to pay to play and to pay as it goes, or to basically cash flow development as it stands. But if the city decided that infrastructure could serve a regional benefit, and then we wanted to oversize it, this benefit fee would allow for that oversizing with the cost being determined by the engineer. And any future developments that would tap onto that oversized would be paid. We could recoup that loss for the at-large through the assessment process, and that's kind of what we're seeing here. So that review is basically assessed with specials. So instead of the equity fee, which is collected upfront, we're basically saying we're going to pay for it at large. The city's going to pay for it. And then we will assess it at a later date to any development down the road if we felt like it had a regional impact and it was regionally significant, which would be at the discretion of the city council, city engineer, city administrator, and everyone else included in that review process. So it would be assessed with specials to future development lots for oversight of the infrastructure. City will carry the cost difference at large until such time as it can be assessed to future developments. Strategy for oversight infrastructure for future growth, so this is part of that strategy, does not require current developers to carry upfront oversized costs. So that was something that was a concern that came up from developers, that they have to pay for this oversized infrastructure, and then the second development doesn't have to pay for that at all. So this is meant to be a more of an equitable distribution of that cost. City has a plan for recouping the cost through specials on future developments. All of this would be tailored as needed, sort of as an ad hoc per development. Financially, there is a small publication cost if it was down the road right now, legally as approved as the form. It is recommended the city council receive and file and direct staff accordingly. Any questions, comments, or concerns about that? But as mentioned, we can't really adopt any ordinance today. The ordinance is in your agenda packet for review, but you can't adopt it right now until after the planning commission reviews it on October tenth. And then that recommendation by the planning commission will come to city council, and then you can adopt it officially with that ordinance. But we're open to questions and comments right now and thoughts, and city staff is eager to see if we're moving in the right direction for that benefit fee.
I think it's a great idea.
So, Mike, the developer, subject to that oversized cost, he would get notified at subdivision level? It'd be in the sub-rig saying that, you know, we're aware that you are developing on a piece of property that we've oversized a line to bring water to you, so there will be an oversized or a, what do you call it? A benefit?
Benefit fee.
Benefit fee in addition to your normal development cost.
That's right, that's right. And so we would involve Kevin Cowan, which is our bond attorney, in the drafting of petitions for the assessment of that oversized cost on the future development.
And so they could special assess that to them?
That's right. Yeah, and that's kind of the way we'd be looking at it. Just to give them a heads up that we basically extended, we went from a four-inch line hypothetically to an eight-inch line, and we run it parallel to your future development. You bought that land. You want to tap into that eight-inch line. So that cost that the city is carrying overhead is now going to be assessed to that property. And so instead of, it's kind of a win-win for the city because we get to recoup our loss, but it's also a win for the developer because costs generally don't go down, they always go up. So it's kind of like we are paying current prices for a line that they're going to be paying a specials on at a later date. And so a later date, if they were to put in that line themselves, could be dramatically more expensive than it is currently. And so it's sort of like freezing the time, freezing that infrastructure in time and preparing those specials for your future date, which I think the developer would benefit from as opposed to having to extend that line himself at a future date and finding that those costs have increased dramatically. And so that's kind of how we're looking at how we could be a little bit more equitable for the extension of our infrastructure while both recouping that loss for the city so the city doesn't have to carry that cost in perpetuity, and the developer would actually benefit from from an immediate infrastructure assessment, or immediate infrastructure access, I should say, because it'd be right next to the building.
The only question I have is like, when they have another development come in and they're using somebody else's lift station, do they have to pay that development to tap into that to help pay for the lift station?
That.
The basin's usually not, but they do pay for an increased pump charge. So in other words, you're increasing the size of the pumps. And then if the basin's oversized, then at that point, they would be paying a benefit fee. But if it was essentially kind of the base load design, and then we're simply utilizing pumps in the existing sewer main, then at that point, I don't think that that would apply. But if we were needing, or we paid an oversized for that, then, because there is, and Harlan can probably speak more eloquently to this, there is some slippage in which pumps and pump size will help alleviate that, the basin requirement for what's coming in from the sewer and then be pumped through a pressurized line.
Yeah, I think we'd look at what we, obviously, we can't change the basin easily. But the internal piping and the pump size and that sort of thing can be upgraded to a certain extent because you're somewhat limited by the force main, the discharges from that as far as what the pumping capacity, what you can increase it to. But those sorts of things, internal mechanical improvements, I think we could look at those, that those upgrades would have to be paid by new development.
I guess that pipe size determines the basin size, too, right? Just how big the basin?
Somewhat, somewhat. There is, there is a little bit of flexibility in pump size and, you know, how much pressure head you pump against. The more you try to pump through a small, smaller pipe, the more friction loss you have. So it's not as efficient as what, you know, a pump initially sized could be. But it, and so you have storage in the basin necessary to give you time to pump that out, to pump a volume out. So the, I guess there is some variability that allows you to upsize the pumps using the existing force.
If it's a small basin, then you put a bigger pump in, whether it cycles or fast that you're doing pump, pumping it down.
Right. I mean, you do have to look at those sorts of things because, yeah, there's some, there are some limitations there.
And your calculations, is it a portion of kind of max flow? Or is it kind of like the Super Bowl flush where at halftime, everybody flushes them once and stresses?
No, you don't size it necessarily for the peak, for the peak demand. You size it for some more, more average daily demand, something like that. And the stories that you have, the stories that you have in the wet well gives you time to pump that volume through the force. I did have a question about, like the one we did for Trails End. Would that, would that upsizing cost there, would that still be in play, or would that one be grandfathered, do you know, or the water line? The water line upside.
It would be in play for whoever's.
The next, the next developer?
Right, because their base load is their base load, so they're not paying anything for the over.
So we could, yeah, in theory. If somebody develops north of Goddard Trails End, we could assess them the difference.
First, you mean south, maybe?
South or west.
South or whichever direction.
Whichever direction, in all directions, yeah.
Anybody else have any questions?
We just wanted to make sure we were on the course that the council wants to go. So that way, you're essentially directing the planning commission to consider this, and then it'll be forwarded to you. Because if you have something different in mind and the planning commission considered it first, and then it's dead on arrival because it's not what the council wants, that's why we're bringing it to you first, is to make sure this is in the direction that you want before it goes to the planning commission. Which will then come back to you once it's in our zoning code.
We don't need to vote on this. We just need to.
Just tell us we're doing the right thing, or you want to.
You're doing the right thing.
You're doing the right thing. Go ahead and go for it.
Thumbs up.
Very good. Well, thank you very much. We will move forward with it then.
Thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
Honorable governing body, this is just a clean up from the last meeting of the standard traffic ordinance. So due to an incorrect date on the ordinance that was published, the item needs to be reapproved and republished. Goddard annually adopts the standard traffic ordinance. It's a uniform code derived from Kansas statutes and includes local amendments to pertinent traffic laws. The proposed ordinance includes only local amendments previously approved by the governing body and it has been reviewed by the city prosecutor, chief of police, and city administrator. The 2022 amendments included in the proposed ordinance maintain the city of Goddard's compliance with applicable Kansas statutes while addressing local concerns. So the changes for 2022 are listed in the staff report and the police department is responsible for the enforcement of the standard traffic ordinance. So the ordinance must be published in the official paper of record. There must be at least three copies of the STO on file with the city clerk and each police officer has issued a copy of the STO. So a small publication fee. City legal staff has reviewed the proposed ordinance and it has recommended that we adopt the proposed ordinance of the 2022 49th edition of the standard traffic ordinance. If there's no questions or comments, we'll look to waive the reading of the ordinance.
Motion to waive the reading.
Make a motion to waive the reading of the ordinance.
Is there a second?
Second.
Another second, a discussion. Vote aye.
Aye.
Vote. Take a motion to consider the ordinance.
Make a motion that we consider the ordinance.
Second.
Smoke and a second, a discussion. Vote call.
Councilmember Nathan? Yes. Councilmember Summerman?
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor?
Yes.
Councilmember Proctor?
Yes.
I make the ordinance 902.
Honorable mayor and city council, this is item H.2. This is the master fee schedule resolution as mentioned before. Static reoccurring fees that are not calculated ad hoc are typically included in the master fee schedule for reference by citizens and other cities for comparison and review. From time to time changes to these fees or, or adoption of new fees required review and approval by the governing body with an adoption of a resolution for a revised master fee schedule. The governing body is reviewing a resolution to amend the master fee schedule to include the fees related to the sewer plant equity fee, which is actually should be the sewer infrastructure equity fee and the water infrastructure equity fee. The resolution will take effect upon adoption by the governing body today. So this is something you've seen before. So your infrastructure equity fee? Water infrastructure equity fee? Financially none, legally it's approved as a form. It is recommended the city council approve the resolution amending the master fee schedule and it'll include those equity fees which we discussed in the previous agenda item and the ones that you just saw on the slide.
I make a motion that we approve the resolution amending the master fee schedule.
Motion.
Second.
Second. Any discussion? Vote aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Honorable mayor and council, IMH3 is based on a request from the Goddard School District to construct a sidewalk. During school day, students and staff from Discovery Intermediate School utilize a linear park for recess, physical education classes, and for their after-school programs like their Discovery F-Square running team. To make the walk between the school and park easier and safer for students and teachers, their maintenance department approached me and proposed to construct a sidewalk connecting the two properties. As I said, they approached me, they've asked to construct a 48-inch wide sidewalk that connects the parking lot of Discovery Intermediate School with the sidewalk at Linear Park. The proposed sidewalk will be mostly on school property with a portion of it crossing through city roadway on near very west of South Street and, and Linear Park itself where it connects to the trail. Here's a somewhat of a map of, of their proposal. This being Linear Park, Discovery School, their parking lot, and then their proposed sidewalk. Now what you'll see here is the city roadway where that used to be, I believe, Oak Street, where that was planned for Oak Street. Is that correct, Micah?
Uh, yeah.
One of the streets north here, but they've never run through, of course. So we have, do have that city roadway. This shows it's on city roadway. JR at the school stated he may run it straight or he may bend it over depending on what his bids come in, but they're going to maintain the sidewalk with their going crews, you know, more nowadays and cutting it. I think it's a good idea. The kids are over there a lot. Financial, none for the city. Legal, nothing really major there. If there are no questions, then it's recommended that the council approve construction of sidewalk between Discovery Intermediate School and Linear Park by USD 265. Any questions?
Can I get a motion?
I will. A motion to allow the school to put in a sidewalk.
Okay, motion is there?
Second.
Any other discussion? Vote aye.
Aye.
Honorable mayor and city council, this is item H.4. It's an island annexation resolution for findings of fact. Quick background, Boston Company has submitted petition for annexation on behalf of Paul Kelsey of Kicking Development for a tract of land located in the county at around 167th Street and 23rd slash Pawnee. This piece of land is proposed to be developed into duplexes on 189 lots. Before the city can consider the rezoning of land, it must be annexed. However, since it is not abiding the corporate city limits, this request is treated as an island annexation under KSA 12-520C. An island annexation under KSA 12-520C must pass three steps which are outlined in the following slide analysis, which we will see in a rap through soon. One of these requests includes adoption of a resolution by the governing body that is sent to the board of county commissioners, B.O.C.C., requesting a review of findings of facts. The B.O.C.C. must find that the annexation will not hinder or prevent proper growth and development of the area of any other incorporated city located in the county. The B.O.C.C. reviews the request and notifies the city within 30 days of its finding, after which the city may annex the track of, the tract of land by an ordinance. So the city council is considering approving a resolution to begin the process of annexing a tract of land into the corporate city limits as an island annexation. The state law requires the three criteria below to be met per KSA 12-520C. The land must be located in the same county, which it is. The owner must consent to or petition for the annexation, which they have, which is in attachment H.4B. The B.O.C.C. must find that the annexation will not hinder or prevent proper growth and development of the area or any other incorporated city located in the county. The resolution requesting findings of fact is attached in H.4A, so the B.O.C.C. will make that determination.
Now, when you make an island annexation, do you have to have a small strip of land connecting it somehow?
No, that's why it's an island. Yeah, an island means it's completely independent of the corporate limits. If you have a small strip of land touching any part of the city corporate limits, it's no longer an island annexation. It's a buddy, it's, or adjoining per state law. But an island is an island by its very definition, meaning that it's not touching any of the corporate limits of the city and therefore we have to abide by KSA 12-520C, which is a state law requirement that we're bound by. But here is the island. Blue is Goddard. This helotrop color is, is Wichita. This is 167th Pawnee. Here's 183rd Walmart's right here. So what we're asking, what the developer, I should say, is asking for is to annex this land into the corporate city limits. And so what the board of county commissioners is going to do is going to look at this island in proximity to Goddard and in proximity to Wichita and determine that Wichita's growth would not be impeded by Goddard annexing this island. They'll make that determination and that's what this resolution today is for. After you approve the resolution, if you choose to approve the resolution, Terry Lamont, the city clerk, will send that resolution with the petition from the developer to the county clerk and the county clerk will distribute it to the board of county commissioners and they will deliberate and they have 30 days to deliberate. And after those 30 days, they're going to send us a reply letter saying, we have found that there's no adverse impact on Wichita, which would be the only closest incorporated city, and you can move forward with the ordinance for adoption and annexation of this into the corporate city limits. Bearing in mind that as an island, it's kind of unique, meaning that every adjoining piece of property around it, if they were to choose to be annexed, except for this one, of course, because it's touching, but if these pieces over here decided, hey, we want it to be annexed, all of these will have to be considered as independent island annexations. So that even though we annex this and it becomes part of the city of Goddard, if you choose to move forward with that, every adjoining piece would be, have to be treated as a separate island annexation. It's not, it's not considered abiding or adjoining per state law, so-
Until it becomes homogenous.
Until it becomes homogenous, one continuous track of incorporated land.
And it's important to note that Marie Meadows, which is to the immediate left, had, if the city had grown organically, that would be in Goddard. But in 2006, and the reason we've never annexed that is in 2006, they requested to come into the city and the city denied their petition. They incurred substantial development costs, including having rural water have to extend a main down 183rd to serve them, where we had a 12-inch main half a mile away to serve the schools. And they also, rather than being able to get on the sewer, had to go with Lagoon Septic. So that's why we have never proceeded to, to annex those two parcels along Pawnee there.
So why did we deny it?
I don't know. That was before I was here. So it really wouldn't be right for us to come back, not all that much later and say, hey, surprise.
We're watching the city now.
I presume the cost to extract them from rural water would have been pretty substantial if rural water paid to put infrastructure into the water line.
I think that that was part of, that rural water were a huge, huge chunk of money.
Oh, they were trying to gouge us?
For putting that, getting the rights to those houses.
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's certainly one of the factors that goes into, you know, acquiring water rights from rural water is to the extent that they have invested in infrastructure in that area, they're entitled to demand repayment of that.
Right. And the, the water main used to run down 167th until serving Marie Meadows and then they rerouted it down 183rd to serve. And that's where that 10-inch main comes from now, was at the time to serve those two quarter sections.
Questions about serving this property? I have provided a slide here showing current city infrastructure. Orange in this case is Goddard. Helotrop once again is going to be Wichita. Blue is our water lines with water valves being this little cross section here. Green is sewer with manholes. As you know, Harland, four A P City Engineers here, Burke Van Broeck, public works director, and Brian Silk, that's the administrator, they can speak a little more definitively about how services could be extended. And I have to disqualify myself from mentioning any type of infrastructure reaching out to here. It's outside my purview of how you would service that area, but any one of them can speak a little bit more eloquently on the subject about how we could serve that island.
And we should probably make the, the trail water line, the supply line, like a red because we don't want to start tapping into that line. Otherwise, you, you get into the sticky wicket that we had before where you were taking your supply line from the wellfields and everyone was drawing from it and then what was left went to fill the tower and there wasn't enough left to fill the tower. And so that's why we have a dedicated transmission line that's not intended for tapping.
So the developer is obviously, should be aware that the water main's got to come from 54 down to serve this property.
Or I guess in theory, one could extend it from 151st possibly back across.
Of course, I don't think that's a very big line.
It's not, and I don't- It's a, is it a four-inch?
I think it's pretty small.
It's a pretty small.
And then we did talk initially about maybe providing sewer to this. They'd have to bring sewer down to this, the southeast regional lift station down here that was built with Arbor Creek, so.
Is there gravity available, committed gravity all the way from this?
I, I think we've tentatively determined that, but I, I'd leave that up to Boston. I think they're, they're engineers. Does the, does the north 80, does it have any discussions on possible annexation or?
This one, we haven't reached out to the property owner. There are some discussions about development around this area, but right now this one is relatively untouched. That's why I think we're moving, trying to move forward with the island annexation since developer's pretty keen on getting this one started. And this would kind of just be one block of many blocks in our, sort of our attempt to stave off Wichita with developing 167 and annexing 167 and building our, our developments, growing the city in a constructive way.
Just looking at that area, Harland, do you, do you see how, how much oversized we need to take in the future developments around that?
Um, no, really haven't gotten that far. We, we, I, back when we did, we did size the transmission line, you know, we had done a study on the, on the water system. And obviously it's about 10, 12 years old, but the, I mean, the pressure map for that area indicates that it should be able to be served by our water main. But obviously, I think we have a 12-inch in Kellogg up there, so I don't know if, if it serves much purpose for being much larger than that to get a, to get a line down to them, so.
Well, I'm just talking about maybe the sewer or whatever.
Well, if, if indeed it could be served by gravity, the nice thing, if we do oversize that, we can lay the sewer line at a little flatter slope. And so it could potentially not only serve this development, but yes, the, the, the properties adjacent to it.
Is it the same owner that owns both those lands?
No, this is two separate owners.
And we did have preliminary discussion with the development of that parcel that's immediately to the south at 167th and Pawnee, but it, it hasn't proceeded because of the lack of infrastructure in place. So I don't know if that's even still on the table, but there was some initial discussions with a separate developer for housing. Single pack.
We, we could potentially use Pawnee rightaway for the sanitary sewer line or try to get an easement from the adjacent property owners either on the north or south of that rightaway to lay a sewer in. So that could be, I mean, there is an avenue there to get down to the southeast Grove Lift Station, so.
We're trying to get a deal with the rural water to where it isn't going to cost us a whole bunch to take on that area.
I believe Ryan Pecker, or Brian could speak on that one.
Yeah, last I heard from rural water's attorney, he seemed to be okay with it. He's, he indicated that his folks seem to be okay with it, but I haven't seen a signed agreement back yet. So it's been a few weeks since I followed up with him, so I'll set a reminder to shoot him an email tomorrow about that.
Because we basically have to buy the rights to that rural water, wouldn't we?
Correct. Right. Well, the developer has to buy the rights.
Is there much of a downside to bringing it into the city? Legal? I don't know.
From a legal standpoint, I mean, if you bring it into the city, I mean, then you're obligated to provide services. And so, but at this point, I mean, I don't have any reason to believe that rural waters would be unreasonable to finalize a deal to acquire those rights. would be unreasonable to finalize a deal to acquire those rights.
As long as we don't have to put up a water tower down there to keep the pressure up, I guess. What do you think, Harland?
Well, I mean, at this point in time, we're going to be updating our pressure study of the system so that we can confirm that we do have adequate pressure to service it, but this preliminary report that was like 10 or 12 years ago would seem to indicate we should be able to. I think the areas more remote than this would perhaps be of a concern. The further you get away from Kellogg, you know, as the ground drops, it becomes a little more difficult to serve with adequate pressure. Or the ground rises, I should say.
Should that be a problem? Is there a way of putting a booster pump in the lot?
Well, yeah, there's always, yes. There always is the option of a booster station, booster pump station.
How much does a booster station cost?
Oh, I put one in Clearwater probably 10 years ago, and it was about $50,000, $60,000. It's probably $100,000 to $150,000.
And new towers, about $2,000, $2.5 million?
Yeah, I've got, the wire, I'm putting together a budget proposal right now, and he's saying 1.72 for the tower itself. That does not include any piping to get the water to it or water away from it to distribute itself.
How big a tank is that?
That would be a half a million gallons.
So can we run a water line still on the trail's end? To run, to feed to that, or?
No.
No?
You'd have to go to Kellogg.
Let's see which hell waters right there are. That's our line, it's just a small line. The purple, that's all it's got.
Unless we can, unless we can come over from 23rd Street, is that, how big a line is that? Is that 10?
That'd be a question for Harland, 23rd Street.
I'd have to check, I don't know what, how big a lane we brought over to serve Arbor.
It's eight. Because that's what's stubbed down in front of Amelia.
And it's a little further run to down Pawnee than it is from propping down from Kellogg.
Yeah, my initial thought would, we'd want to be, we'd be better off coming off the 12-inch, just to make sure we had adequate capacity. And someday, yes, that should form a loop, we bring the line down Pawnee and loop into that.
Does anybody have any other questions that want to ask Micah?
So there'd be a small cost for postage to the county clerk. Legally, it's approved as a form. It is recommended city council approve the resolution to request findings of fact from the Board of County Commissioners to begin annexation process for the tract of land generally located on northwest corner of 167th Pawnee, and simultaneously approve the petition for annexation, which can be considered in one motion.
I would like to make that motion.
Motion is a second.
Second.
Motion is a second. Any discussion? On favor, aye.
Aye.
Aye. No.
Aye. So what's three, three ones?
Motion passes.
Motion passes.
Thank you very much.
The developers got to pay for it.
To run them or all the way down to them?
If it's only a service, yes.
Oversizing all the way from the school to all the way down to?
Down to there.
Oh, they pay for that all the way? Oh, okay. Okay.
Honorable governing body, this is a sound amplification waiver and fireworks display permit approval for Fall Festival. So the annual Goddard Fall Festival will take place on October 21st through the 23rd, 2022. The event will be hosted at Goddard Linear Park, the pavilion and the surrounding area of Main Street. This event will have fireworks, amplified music, food, and will potentially have an attendance of approximately 6,000 people over a three-day period during the event. So the Goddard Chamber of Commerce has asked for a waiver of the sound policy and a fireworks display permit for the event, similar to previous years and previous events. So here are our current regulations in the code. So we are allowed to grant, city council is allowed to grant temporary exemptions for both the sound amplification policy and the firework policy. So here is the main area of where Fall Fest will be taking place, and then fireworks will be shot over here. So the fireworks will be October 22nd, Saturday, assume after 10:30, Angie?
Yeah.
And then the live music will be taking place from 8 to 11 on Friday, the 21st, and Saturday, the 22nd, with the stage being close to the pavilion there.
Yeah, it'll be at Main and Santa Fe, same place it was last year.
So there is a small publication cost for this ordinance. If there are no questions or comments, we'll look to waive the reading of the ordinance.
Is it a motion to waive the reading?
I'd make a motion that we waive the reading of the ordinance.
Motion is a second. Discussion? On favor, aye.
Aye. Make a motion to approve the waiver for the sound ordinance and the issuance of a permit for fireworks display for the 2022 Fall Festival event.
Second.
Motion is a second. Discussion? Roll call.
Councilmember Leland?
Yes.
Councilmember Zimmerman?
Yes.
Councilmember Traylor?
Yes.
Councilmember Proctor?
Yes.
And the ordinance 903.
Honorable Mayor and City Council, just a rundown on the progress of the development that we have going in around our community. The Starbarn site, looking almost straight west, this would be the childcare facility with the water park and then the health club, and you can see the hotel in the background. This is the Phase 2 ball fields, which are essentially, they're complete, and just finalizing the pavilion building. Arbor Creek, looking straight west, Phase 1, and then, of course, this right here would be Phase 2. And the view of the community center there for the neighborhood. And just so you know, right here will be the second addition that should be forthcoming here in the next couple of meetings. Elk Ridge, 100% built out, and you can see the few remaining lots are slowly being infilled. Cloverleaf, this is Phase 2, and you can see where Phase 3 comes across. So Phase 1 with the lawns, Phase 3, and then we have Phase 2. That's highlighted again with the light gray being Phase 1, dark gray being Phase 2, and the tan being Phase 3. Rustic Creek with Phase 1, and you can see the spec home development there on Phase 1's roads. And Brooke has reported the Cedar Street Rehab Project, which will begin tomorrow and will continue throughout this week, so it should be completed weather-dependent here this week, so...
Did you mention the contribution the township made on the culverts?
I have not. I need to add that back. When we give our storm, I mean, our road review for the year, it's important to note, and we appreciate the township offering $10,000, and they have paid us for the repair of those culverts off of 23rd Street for that project that was completed. So that's always good when we can work cooperatively to solve a problem. Thank you, Brooke. And so we'll have the utility cuts estimated to begin here midweek as well. So Fall Festival, as you know, is fast approaching, and at the next meeting, our chamber director, well, Angie Dunce will be providing an overview of the activities as an agenda item, so we'll know what to look forward to, and she said that the Fall Fest guides would be coming out this week. Did you have anything more to add at this time, Angie?
Not right now, it's going to be larger than last year. We are booking vendors and food trucks like crazy, so that's really good news.
Good, thank you. And then we'll have a Halloween movie night on Thursday, October 20th. The kids are out of school on Friday, the 21st, so they can stay up late and watch movies in the park. And then just some items coming forward, we're still hoping to present a Starbarn plat, it may end up being in November, but we are working on that still. Wells Underwood Final Plat, which is coming down the pipe soon. We've got more discussions on Wichita's encroachment, and we'll show you a map and an overlay of where they're at, and some possible courses of action that we as staff would like to get your permission to begin discussions with the surrounding development about becoming neighbors as opposed to community members. And then we'll have sprinkler sod discussion, manifold update, and then administrative code updates as well. That concludes my overview. If there are no questions for myself or any other member of the team? Thank you.
All right, governing body, comment, Sarah?
I don't have anything.
All right, Michael?
Hey, good work on the Fall Fest and putting that all together.
Thank you.
Unfortunately.
It should be fun.
You guys have all done a good job. We appreciate you. Thank you.
Is it the collective "we" or? Them, me?
All of you. Everybody.
Thank you.
Was that your comment, Brent, or you got something else?
I got sunburn, you know? Let me go to sleep.
I just didn't hear anything on the tracks we're going to get into the city there over by the park.
No, I think I want to talk to you after the meeting about it.
All right. All right, that's pretty much all I've got, so I guess I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion is a second. On favor, aye.
Aye.